So, one o'clock and I can hear the bell tolling. So, welcome councillors. Here we have everybody here from the media of the Channel 9. So, we'll get the meeting underway but just before I do that, I thought it would be appropriate just to note the passing of Neil Collins. Neil served as a Member of Council for twenty-two-and-a-half years with a break in between. My memory of him was that he was always someone who treated his fellow councillors with respect and was conscientious in performing his responsibilities as a councillor. One of the things that I remember is when a meeting got fractious, Neil would often find some way to introduce just a little bit of humour, to break that stress. So, he was one of those councillors that certainly made a difference. Outside of his role as a councillor, of course, we all knew Neil as a broadcaster and he had a very prestigious and long career in broadcasting. And so, with that, he had the opportunity over the years to interview some fairly significant people. And it was something that he was extremely proud of. And at times when we'd come out of a council meeting and disappeared into the Brian Arnold room for a little drink, Neil would tell us stories of some of these people that he had interviewed. An amazing man. So, Neil made a real contribution to this community and I think it's appropriate that we recognise that today as it's the first meeting since Neil's passing. So, with that said, councillors, we will go into the meeting proper. There is no public forum. There are no apologies. So, we come to the confirmation of the agenda and I will move that we confirm the agenda with the following alteration in regard to standing order 21.1, option C be adopted in relation to moving and seconding and speaking to amendments. Seconded councillor Gary. I'll put it all in favour. Against, carried. Declarations of interest. Do any councillors have any changes to their interests? Councillor Hawkins?
Thank you. It's with a sense of relief, Mr Chairman, that I'm no longer a Commissioner on the 2GP hearings panel. And so, it's probably worth removing that from the interest register as of this point.
I assume that also affects a couple of others. So, we will get that updated. So, any others? Councillor Hall?
No longer a trustee here, the super grand's resigned from that.
Okay.
Super grand trustee.
Councillor O'Malley?
I've added a company and my house to the registry. It's already added but it's just not on this.
Yep. Councillor Wilson, you're okay? Councillor Gary?
And I've got one that's listed as partner of Chair Nationality Forge, it is Cease Trading.
Okay. So, that is all of the changes. I will move that the committee amends the elected members' interest register as attached in light of those changes and confirms the proposed management plan for elected members' interests. Seconded councillor Hawkins. All in favour?
Aye.
Against, carried. That brings us to the first item, item five of the agenda, Enterprise Dunedin July to September 2018 Activity Report. And we are being joined by Suze Andez, I think. Welcome. Is there anything you would like to add or introduce in your report or do you just want to go to questions?
I'll have you to go to questions.
All right. Questions councillors? Councillor Gary?
Thank you for the report, which has got lots of information, lots of activity. I just had a question around a note on page sixteen, six B around business events and notes about the international bid being successful for the World Leisure Congress. Could you just tell us about the connection between Enterprise Dunedin and DVML in terms of the bidding for conferences? How is that process? What is the link? If there's something ED identifies?
So, we have a strong relationship with DVML around identifying potential opportunities. We also work in partnership with Tourism New Zealand. So, you'll find that conference venues actually have a sales programme, so they will often go make connections with professional conference organisers and when opportunities present themselves, they may bid. Sometimes Enterprise Dunedin may be the lead for those contacts or opportunities, other times we're also involved in hosting. So, part of our delivery around selling Dunedin as a conference destination is showcasing the city, sometimes on a more generic platform and other times specifically for those particular conferences that are coming up.
And what happens if there's another department within council that identifies an opportunity? That would come through ED, I imagine.
Well, it can come through different channels but we do work across council collaboratively and where there may be an opportunity that we would be approached or we may engage with those other departments to say, look, here's an opportunity that we may have to consider in terms of delivery. The Trends event that we hosted this year is such an example because it was really a council-wide and city-wide delivery for that particular event.
And my final question around that is around the six conference leads. What's the sort of average time from, you know, being aware of the possibility to a successful bid? Just to give us a bit of an idea of that process.
So, we're actually, in terms of lead time, we're looking at a conference out to 2026 at the moment, so it can have quite a long lead time. However, depending on circumstances for some of those smaller events, particularly the ones that association events which go North Island, South Island, that can be a shorter lead time, so that could be six to twelve months.
Thank you very much.
Councillor Lord?
Yeah, look, I just had a question around the Seven Communications in Australia that you've engaged them through till the end of June. I'm just wondering, sort of like at that spend, it looks like it's about two-and-a-half thousand a month, what would you expect to get for that?
Well, actually, I think Sarah and Sunai are going to cover that off in the next paper. However, it'll be about leveraging off those contacts that Seven as an agency has already existing. So, it'll be, you know, on our behalf, based on content and opportunities that we identify, pitching to those particular media agencies and contacts to showcase Dunedin and their various publications or channels that they are using. And as I say, Sarah will be able to cover off in depth a bit more about what that programme's going to entail but it's, we feel that for the level of investment that we have, it's a very good opportunity to use somebody in the market with that knowledge and those contacts.
Yep. And the other question I had just relating to the strategy and the economic goals, the extra jobs and the extra value per salary job, do we know how we're going with that? Have we got an update of those figures?
Through the chair. At the moment, we haven't had the latest update. We're hoping for an update later in November for the previous three months. So, that information will come through from Infometrics. So, as soon as we get that, we can put it out.
Councillor Hawkins?
Thank you, Mr Chairman. Thank you. My question's around six D, study Dunedin. And obviously, there's been a strong focus under the EDS around the China market for education. But this lists the top five, China, USA, Malaysia, India and Germany. I'm just curious as to how far, well, how much smaller those other four are and how much effort we're putting into those markets. I know under the Bush administration, studying abroad was quite popular among American college students and a similar situation may be occurring now. But how much smaller are they and are we active in trying to build those markets outside of China?
Sorry. Thank you. I'm Margot Reid, the Study Dunedin Coordinator. So, the university market is our biggest market, so they've got over 2,000 students out of that nearly five. So, their figures sway those numbers quite significantly. The China and US market are the biggest by a significant margin. Malaysia, India and Germany, the Malaysian and Indian markets are tertiary markets and it's only the German market that's a high school market. So, the German market is being strongly pursued by the high schools in that space. The India market is one that we're actually looking at, both in the tertiary and starting to look at in the high school market. Now, it's not a very strong market in the high school market at this stage but we can see that growing with a growing Indian middle class. So, and the US market is almost entirely from the university rather than the polytechnic and that market is also growing very strongly, obviously with what's happening in America and are growing.
Yes, sorry. That's all really useful information and some figures around that at some point further down the line will be helpful. But I'm interested in kind of our, or the, our staff resourcing that's going into, outside of China, which gets reported on quite often. Are we supporting any of those other programmes or is that being led by the institutions themselves?
So, Thailand is a big market for us going forward, so we're supporting both the high school and tertiary market in that space. And as you can see, in the high school market, we are pursuing some partnerships with some high schools at this stage, which will lead to economic and social collaboration in that space and we're likely to get a number of those Thai students out studying next year. Germany's another market that we are certainly helping the high school and university market to pursue strongly. And we're also, there's a strong high school interest in the South American market that we're also looking at for next year.
Yeah, thank you. Councillor Elda?
Thank you, Chris. I was having a similar thought around study Dunedin and I see that Otago grew by seven percent, seconded only to Waikato that grew by eight percent. And I was just wondering what you think is working, so what the feedback is on what is working in this space, because obviously it is doing quite well.
I think it's because all sectors are growing, not just one. So, the polytechnic sector grew by fourteen percent in the last year, which has been quite significant. And they've also shown a real willingness to grow and so they will continue to attract international students. The university is growing at a larger rate than they have in the past. They have previously had a cap and now they are looking at at least a three percent growth year-on-year and as the biggest supplier of international students, that certainly helps. And the continued growth in the China and American markets.
I see you put a fantastic-looking booklet out. What's the feedback on sort of some of that sort of marketing material you're putting out to the schools, et cetera?
It's been well received because we're in a quite unique position in that we're small enough that a booklet like that is not onerous for people and the fact that we've got it all, all of the information in one space makes it easy, an easy access guide. So, it's been well received in a number of markets.
Cool, thank you.
Thanks.
Councillor Gary?
And well done.
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to follow up with a question, Ms Reid, about study Dunedin. And I wondered if you could talk us through the kinds of initiatives that you, as the Study Dunedin Coordinator, have been involved in recently, for example, with the Thai Principals and the South American delegation that visit, the sort of, the start of that, just to give us a summary, the start of that through to the outcomes for the city?
So, we work very closely in partnership with Education New Zealand and they often provide us with our ability to host agents from offshore. We also have our own opportunities. So, the Thai Principals have come through the University Language Centre, University Otago Language Centre, who has actually been teaching English to Thai teachers in Thailand. So, they've taught now over a thousand teachers on a programme over there and that has led to further collaboration with the Thai government in a number of areas. And that's now leading to a possible partnership with Princess Chulabon High Schools, who are science high schools, so interested in the STEM subjects. And they're very interested in learning more about how we teach in New Zealand and also ensuring that their students have a good level of English. The whole area of global citizenship is becoming very important globally. So, we've got directors of that group out next week, hoping to sign partnerships with high schools. And that will lead to Thai students coming out for at least two terms in the following years. And also, some really nice collaborations between the schools in terms of online science projects and buddies between the schools.
So, would it be fair to say it's quite diverse, the process to getting to the outcomes of actually getting students?
Yes.
So, the South American example, just briefly?
So, Education New Zealand bought five Colombian agents out, that's a growing market. The New Zealand central government is certainly putting a lot into the central, into South America. They've now got five embassies open, which will allow us to feed off our ability to open markets and more than just in education. For example, AD Instruments has opened an office in Brazil and so that business and education pathway is becoming very strong and important.
And so, finally, would it be fair to say that the changes to immigration have been a huge part of that interest?
Yes, that will be a game-changer, especially in that market.
Thank you very much for that full answer.
Councillor Wiley has indicated he will move by a second. Councillor Gary? Discussion? There is none? In that case, I will put it. All in favour? Against, carried. That brings us on to item six, Dunedin Marketing Autumn/Winter Campaign 2018. And we have Sunai and Sarah, welcome to the table.
Thank you.
Is there anything you want to introduce on your report or do you just want to go to questions?
Hello? Good afternoon, council. So, this is year three of a three-year Australian campaign run by Enterprise Dunedin, predominantly focusing on the Queensland market, which was originally designed to support the direct flight from Brisbane. This year's results were based on the aims of increasing an Australian visitor spend by six percent over the year and also looking to raise awareness of Dunedin as a compelling destination. And just bring your attention to the fact that the spend from the Australian market increased by 6.6% year-end September 2018 and we had an average of a four percent increase in those direct flight passengers from Brisbane as well.
Questions councillors? Councillor Lord?
Yeah, I just, you said in your opening that it was specifically to help support the flight, but do you have any way of identifying, for example, if the spend that's increased is from tourist ships, people buying a coffee in the otten or whether it's from people, apart from the fact that you said you've had a four percent increase? Can you, do you have the data to suggest it's because of the increased flights?
So, it's not only to support the flight, obviously throughout the campaign was also had a wider objective of increasing Australian visitor spend in Dunedin on average throughout the course of the year. The flight data itself for spend, we don't have access to any data that relates specifically to that. So, this is just sort of throughout the year Australian visitor spend, but it would be a combination of factors.
Do you have the figure, the four percent has increased to what's the occupancy of those flights now?
I'd have to go back and have a look at the exact numbers, but that's an average over the winter months. I think we peaked at 11% over, I believe it was July and August, there was an 11% increase on last year's figures.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Hawkins?
Thank you, Mr Chairman. Thank you for the report. It's a similar question and it's around correlation isn't causation. So, this report tells us that we've spent money on these things and these figures have changed, but there's nothing to say that they're related in any meaningful way, we just don't know. So, I'm wondering if, now that we're at the end of the three-year cycle, should we expect a more robust analysis of that entire cycle before council makes decisions as to where to redeploy its investment, marketing investment beyond the end of this campaign?
Thank you for your question. This is really a tricky part about marketing. It's really hard to gather a lot of data and understand why people have come to visit your destination. So, when we were in Brisbane recently, we talked with the Brisbane marketing team around that very question to say, how can you capture that data? Now, struggling as well, we know other places around New Zealand are. So, it's about, I think, gathering the information that we can, including anecdotal information, which I think is really important to do with marketing. And then the insights that we get, along with the market research as well, we can then plan ahead.
My other question, and I doubt you can answer them, but I'm curious as to, is it just for our information, this attached report from the airport company?
So, we had some pre and post campaign market research in conjunction with the airport, so bringing in some information about the flights. So, yeah, it's for your information and also it is insights that's helping us plan ahead as well.
Because I was surprised in some of the commentary in that report where it seemed to suggest that people, that people finding out about Dunedin and being attracted to this place by word of mouth was a negative thing and as opposed to making that decision based on seeing our advertising? Do you have a view on the relative merits of word of mouth as a marketing tool as opposed to in cinema advertising or the other methods that we're using?
Just with the survey results, so that report was collated by three consultants, so the assumptions, some of the assumptions and the wording they've used would not necessarily be ours. So, based on the raw data, we could come to potentially some different conclusions there, but we do believe word of mouth is still a very strong marketing tool and probably one of our strongest for Australians, particularly because a large percentage of the Australian market is still the visiting friends and relatives.
And just to add to that, the word of mouth also includes social media, really, so it's not just conversations, it's also the way that people are promoting their visit on those social channels.
I'd like to know if you've come to different conclusions. Thank you.
Councillor Lord?
I just did have another question and that was to do with the spend for the 2018 campaign. Is there a way that we, like, we put in a large lump of cash for that and other people are donating a similar amount, but some in cash, some in kind? I can understand, for example, if the airport or hotel puts up some money, they can very easily measure their benefit by offering vouchers or whatever, they know who comes in. Do we have any way of working out the percentage that we put in? Do we ever get a return from that or is that just something we do for the common good, if you know what I mean? Like, do we know if the city itself sees a return for that money?
Well, the assumption would be that part of the increase in visitor spend would be attributed to campaigns such as this, especially because it's been in the market for three years, so it would be building on that profile year-on-year.
Yeah.
And I guess there's also the other side of it, is what's the cost if we do nothing? So, it's sort of an assumption that there would be.
Yeah, I guess, I guess what I was thinking with the question is, if we spend more...
Yeah.
What I was thinking is if we directly got some of the money back, that wouldn't incentivise us to perhaps spend more, but even if we do get money back indirectly, we can't just keep spending unlimited amounts. And I'm just trying to work out, is there a point where you would, well, I mean, I'm sure you would love an unlimited budget, but that's contestable. But the question is, is there a way that we can get better benefits? Could we, would spending more give us better results or are we sort of at a limit where we're doing as good as we can? Is it answerable? I don't know, it might be too tricky.
I think when, in the sort of conclusions of the report, we've mentioned there that potentially an increase in budget would allow us to expand our geographic location. So, looking at potentially going down, further down the east coast of Australia, for example. We know that our spend from those visitors as well is quite lucrative for Dunedin. So, really, I mean, it depends on what channels you use. This year, we tried to use a diverse range of channels, so we could have as many touch points with the consumers as possible and tried to use the budget as smartly as we could. It's quite a large market and probably our budget's more conservative potentially than would be ideal, but yeah, we tried the best we could with that.
Councillor O'Malley?
Thanks very much. I'm pretty much going to follow up on the same kind of line of questioning again because I think it is about how to interpret the numbers that you're seeing to get the impression of, you know, of impact. I noticed point thirty-three was the graph of the MB Tourism Dashboard for the Dunedin District. And I went and looked at the New Zealand dashboard numbers and they're really quite similar. And I think that, I think it says that currently we're getting 2.1% of the Australian spend and then in 2014, we had 2.2% of the Australian spend, which I would say is within error of saying that fairly similar. So, when you look at this 6.6% growth versus 5.1% growth, how does that compare to the standard error of the data in terms of whether or not that's a statistically significant increase or whether it's basically going up with the national proportion?
I guess it's probably, I probably don't have a lot of information on that here but I'm happy to. I mean, I think the fact that it's still positive and it's above what we were hoping for is...
Right, well, I guess, but if the national spend was going up at a certain rate, if we're having a directed spend which is supposed to sit over and above, what would be happening through passive movement, which you would look at the national spend for your passive? Then you'd be expecting something that sat above that on top as well. If, because, I mean, you could argue that if you didn't spend anything and you had no impact, you should expect the national rate of spend to be proportional to your city if you're getting the same proportion as what's coming in. To which point, I'd ask another question. We've increased the Brisbane flight by four percent. Do you know what the average flight numbers from Australia to New Zealand were in general? So, I should have asked this question ahead of time, but it just occurred to me today. Because I think that'd be quite good. I think that when we do this, I think it is quite good, the benchmark against the national average, because that's probably the best place to tell you whether you're having a differential effect.
Yeah. I mean, the other side of the coin as well is just based on the market research here. As we do know, a lot of our visitors are driving from other ports of entry and so that was also part of our messaging this year is whilst we were pushing the direct flight, we also wanted to encourage people who are coming in through Christchurch, Queenstown, Auckland potentially, just to sort of off the back of some of the Tourism New Zealand and Air New Zealand campaigns.
Great, thanks. Great, thanks.
councillor Alder?
Thank you, chair. My question's just regarding partly the survey, the results from the survey and your comment on point thirty-seven about television. And it seems to me from the survey that television is pretty much the most effective channel. How, how much are we spending on television ads and how much do they generally cost? Because it's.
That's a tricky question. So we haven't, we haven't currently got any television ads in the market. I have, we have actually investigated potentially looking at this for Australia. They are probably, would be far and away exceeding what we're currently, currently using in the market. So there's probably some other ways we could look at employing television, which is by using travel shows and things like that, and it's something we're certainly going to be exploring for the future.
Thank you for that, yeah. It was just, I, I found this survey really, really interesting and thanks for putting this together. It's really fascinating.
councillor Gary?
Thank you. I had a question about the investment partners and I note with interest on page twenty-one, point seventeen, that there were three new investment partners, which was great to see. But I was interested in the feedback you have got and whether we have access to those businesses' figures from the campaign.
So we know from our website how referral rates were very high for our investment partners. So we had some special offers and deals that were then referred on to their own websites. So we know through Google Analytics that they had high rates of referrals, which is really positive. It's really tricky again in marketing to use special deals as an indicator of campaign success, because there can be other factors that stop that booking. So we had, some of our investment partners came back with feedback, they thought the campaign was good and they were happy to be part of the campaign. However, they weren't tracking how many deals were sold, which was unfortunate. I think going forward, we will make sure that was something that was set up well in advance, so we could get that information. But we did have the information from Google Analytics and I believe it was over four thousand referrals.
Thank you. So you'd make it part of the investment would be to have some analysis at their end?
Yeah, that was the intention this year, but obviously our operators are sort of running operations and they're very busy, so they just had to make sure they put it in place on their site as well.
Thank you.
councillor Newell?
Thank you, chair. Thank you very much for the report. Congratulations also on the, on the growth on the, on the flights occupancy. I'm just wondering if you'd care to comment on the security of flight? I know it's been sort of, it's something that we talk about a lot. Have you any sort of updates on that or could you talk to that at all?
We don't personally, no.
Okay, thank you. Yep, thank you.
councillor Alder?
Just another question. And it's sort of to do with trends and from the survey, it said that, for example, for outdoor adventures, forty-two per cent are looking for outdoor adventures and then twenty-two per cent are looking for hiking and walking tracks. And I was just wondering, is there an identified trend in this direction worldwide? I don't know, it's, it's just my perception is this is a growing field. I don't know if that's true or not, so could you respond to that?
I don't have the worldwide figures. We do know that cycling in particular is really popular, popular with the Australian market. The weather wild things are is predominantly a campaign that focuses on the winter season in Dunedin, so potentially not, not something that's so heavily focused on cycling. But certainly as we move forward, we're looking at more of a year round approach and that will certainly form a large part of that mix.
Thank you for that.
councillor Gary?
I'd like to move that we note the Dunedin Marketing Autumn/Winter Campaign two thousand and eighteen report.
Do I have a second, councillor Hall? Discussion, do you want to?
Yes, I would. I'd just like to say in relation to this and in fact the previous report, to thank the staff for their work, there's clearly a great deal of activity happening and it's at a time when staff are also involved in the provincial growth fund applications in a variety of ways. And all of it adds to the positive, makes a contribution to the positive momentum of the city. So I think it's a very positive report and helpful analysis for what we should do going forward.
The other, yes, mayor Carl?
Yeah, look, I think we all acknowledge the importance of the Brisbane flights to both the city and to the airport. And it's not just a matter of airport, of increasing spend in the city, it's because it's the only international link we have. And were it to be lost, then there's a whole lot of knockdown effects that would, would occur. So we are, it's very important that we continue to promote this for that reason alone, and I know that we, that we do. I also note that Queensland is a sister state of Shanghai. As Dunedin's a sister city, Queensland is a sister state. And recently when I was in Shanghai, I had the opportunity to interact with the premier of Queensland who was in Shanghai for the same reason I was, because there was seventeen sister cities or states present. And I talked to her about a suggestion that had been made some time ago about utilizing the connection that we're both sister states slash cities of Shanghai and the possibility of marketing both Queensland and Dunedin on a, on a route from Shanghai, because there's direct flights from Shanghai to Brisbane and there are direct flights from Brisbane to Dunedin and then back again. She seemed pretty interested in it and I also talked to the, some of the directors of the airport board who are also interested. And I think that going forward, we are, we're going to need to use all the tools at our disposal to, to encourage the use of that particular flight. And the, I guess the unintended benefits might be that we increase our China visitations as well. So I think there's, there's some positive stuff we can be doing as well as the spend we're making now.
councillor O'Malley?
Thanks for the, for the report and acknowledge that marketing is, you know, as much of an art as it is a science. But as we do consider the investment we're going into in these things, I think we need to make sure we're being very self critical with the metrics that we're using. Because we do only have a limited amount of resource to spread around and we need to figure out where's that everywhere we want to put it. So I would like to see in future, I do like this national comparative, the national average, and I think that would be quite good to see that always, because it'll give us an indicator of where we're having. And I do also want to bring up the op-ed that the CEO of the airport put forward saying, you know, this concept of our RTO is working in a cooperative manner to create an Otago Southland journey. Queenstown Airport is now at a point of considering what it wants to do next and there is a lot of movement afoot considering that Dunedin could potentially take some of that, if not a lot of that expansion. And if we have a unified plan, maybe we'll see lots and lots of flights coming from Australia, because we'll get a few flights directed out of Queens, out of Queenstown and us. Thanks very much.
Well, I would just like to thank the team for the work they're doing in this area. I think the, the statistics issue and the measures to know whether we are effective or not is, is an area which is under review right now as part of our, our destination plan. And clearly some of the comments that you have made indicate that we need our tourism businesses to try, try a little better perhaps in the supply of data to us, so that we can get a better fix on whether the dollars we're spending are having the desired result. So, you know, the, the referrals are good, but how many of those referrals resulted in a booking? That's some of what we're trying to get here. And I know there's a conversation that is being had with the industry on how we can get a tourism dashboard for the city that's more responsive and gives our operators the opportunity to see what's going on in the market themselves and for us to get a gauge on what our activities, how our activities are influencing that. So I think it's, it's good work, but there's still more to be done. councillor Gary, do you want your right of reply? In that case, I'll put it all in favour, against carried. Our next item up is Gig City Smart City, and I think we're welcoming Fraser Liggett to the table.
Good afternoon. Look, the purpose of this report is to update the Economic Development Committee on Gig City activities between two thousand and fifteen and two thousand and eighteen. The report reviews the activities that have been undertaken over that period by council and the Digital Community Trust and also sets out potential future options going forward, which were prepared by consultant Martin Jenkins, contracted through the Digital Community Trust as well. In summary, the report sets out the outcomes that have been achieved through Gig City over this period and just some highlights within the relatively large attachment, but also reflected in the report that I'd like to draw out is actually firstly around the nine million dollar savings to consumers that's been achieved through the discounted rate that was provided by Corus as part of the competition. The actual extensive support through startups and community projects that was achieved throughout the program again as well, which was nearly in excess of thirty separate projects. Development of infrastructure within the city, wifi hotspots especially, which has created a framework for the Edge Room initiative. And as well as some installation of the gig hub within the, within the Dunedin Public Library. The report picks up on the lessons that we learned through the Gig City program and talks around, it develops those in terms of the roles and responsibilities, expectations and a range of other lessons that we've, that came through the program. And these are we applied in programs such as the development of the Centre of Digital Excellence and our further work around the ecosystem, the startup ecosystem as we go forward. So we are looking within the report on three separate ways of taking forward the findings. And just very, very briefly before, and if questions, just really want to touch on those. So the first part is around the leadership role within council in terms of the activities that we provide as part of the services, the infrastructure solutions, the regulatory functions that we provide. So effectively trying to embed some of this thinking, smart city thinking across the, almost the business as usual aspects of the services that we provide as, as a, as an entity. This can be supported, is going to be supported through the investment choice that council made as part of the long term plan, the hundred thousand dollars, and work is progressing with that as part of the senior leadership team. The second one is again a decision that was taken at the last Economic Development Committee, which was again around investment in the startup ecosystem. We're conscious that there's an inward focus and an outward focus in terms of the activities that were delivered through Gig City and the investment that council made through the startup ecosystem is continuing to deliver on those, those, those business related aspects. The third and final point or part of probably how we see Gig City progressing or the, the legacy progressing is through the Centre of Digital Excellence and actually understanding aspects within there in terms of again supporting business and tech development within the city, but also focusing around some outcomes that are broader than perhaps digital gaming in itself. There's a concept or discussion going around around gaming for good and how that can be applied to a range of services again as well. So excuse the preamble, mister chair, but I just wanted to set the scene for the report and happy to take questions at this point.
questions, councillors? Looks like you've done a pretty good job, Fraser. councillor Hawkins?
Yeah, thank you, mister chairman. Just in eighteen, the Gig City Living Hub, there's a list of things that that has been used for in the nearly two years since that went live. Is that more or less use than was envisaged?
It is less use than what it was envisaged. We realise that more work needs to happen within that space. And to be honest, it's, the gig living hub was something new. It was quite innovative and it was a change within the, within the library, within the , the library service. And over time, we're getting more familiar with what it can be used and we certainly anticipate that there will be a higher degree of growth going forward with that and we'll keep on marketing and pushing it in tight end to events such as Tech Week, which again is something that we're investing into this year again as well. We propose to have more events there.
So is the, the programming of the use of that space being driven by the Economic Development Team rather than the public libraries?
The public library at this present, we work in with them though, but it's driven primarily through the public library. Okay, thank you.
councillor Alder?
Thank you, chair, and thank you for the feedback and the report from Martin Jenkins. Just one question around the telling of the story and how as a city we can tell our story around some of the successes we have because of Gig City to attract more investment in Dunedin. So just, just a bit more about that.
Sure. Telling of the story is actually probably more of a skill set of the previous presenters than myself, but it's, was certainly one of the critical elements of, of the Gig City program. Just referring back into the report, there was a significant amount of news items that were actually produced as part of the program and we did have a dedicated resource working through that. In terms of what that actually meant in outcomes, some of the, the most significant aspects was the engagement we got through the ABC Four Corners program. And again, which had provided an opportunity to showcase what was actually delivered within the city, the successes of the city and what this actually means for businesses in the community. That was extensively picked up by, we, we got a broad range of feedback from that to the point we actually had visiting delegations from at least two cities, Bendigo and a city in Tasmania regarding the lessons that we had actually, around the program, the lessons that we'd learned. There was a reciprocal visit regarding that, still focusing around how we're progressing towards smart city. And again, it's something that's just amplified that message. In terms of the messaging side of it again as well, I do hook that back into aspects such as the development of the Centre of Digital Excellence within the city, which is again building on those stories, the infrastructure and the services that were provided through the program as well.
councillor Wiley?
Fraser, thank you. Point on page one thirty-eight, paragraph thirty-three. Can you just outline what Enterprise Dunedin is doing with the senior leadership team around implementing and the findings from the Martin Jenkins report?
Yeah, sure. So we've had a range, we've had some broad engagement with the senior leadership team in regards to reading the report and the outcomes that were identified through, through the Gig City report. We've engaged, we've raised gigs, we've raised smart city activities as part of a leadership forum, which was conducted earlier this year. So I brought in all the team leaders and the managers within the organization. It has been raised within the senior leadership team in terms of a potential priority. And what has actually happened, which I think is, is very positive, is that a smaller subgroup, which includes Enterprise Dunedin, the Chief Information Officer and group managers around the regulatory water and roading functions have come together to in fact look at effectively the recommendations that have been identified by Martin Jenkins in terms of actually rolling out pilot projects or activities this year. So it is positive, there is an appetite, we believe, within, within the organization to, to progress this and roll it out. So that change is good and it builds on good work that's happening already.
Okay. And then on paragraph thirty-four, it talks about regular updates. How will those be presented? Will they be like every six months or quarterly or?
That's a very good question. We, there's some choices around this, councillor Wiley. I think we could, we will continue to provide an update within the quarterly report, but we believe that given the other activities that we're pushing out on, those three strands, we need to provide more fulsome reports. So perhaps we'll just continue to provide those as the quarterly basis and provide by exception, perhaps twice a year, a larger feedback around in terms of the activities that we're progressing.
Okay. And then referring to the Martin Jenkins report, page one seventy-three, it talks about just adding on to what you've just said about a council led approach to embedding a smart city culture. Are you really comfortable with how that is progressing? You've sort of summarized with senior leadership team, but do you think it's moving down through the layers and through the different entities?
It's a very good question, yes I do. But these things take time and it is a change process within there. We're a very busy organization and part of it is actually creating these pilots and having the engagement and networking with the senior leadership team about that to carry this through. So I am positive that this change is occurring and it will provide value and dividends back to the city.
Okay. Sorry, a couple more questions. On page 180 of the Martin Jenkins Report, success factors. Do you think that's a good outline of what we should be looking at? Is there anything missing there? Obviously, we want to do the avoidance.
Look, I think they're a good starting point within there. And again, we're trying to contextualise the findings from the Martin Jenkins Report and a broad range of other indicators that we want to pull together that'll be outside, if you like, from a business point of view or an investment point of view or a product change in productivity point of view again as well. I'm comfortable with them and I think they will provide a good basis for us tracking forward. But they need to be contextualised and perhaps some of the other KPIs that we've developed and we're working through around the startup ecosystem and what comes through and manifested through code as well.
Okay. And sorry, the final question, page 181. There's the appendix one, which is talking about how we compare with other cities. Do you have any commentary around that?
One of the things that came through the Martin Jenkins Report is that there's no one-size-fits-all approach in terms of the considering smart city activity. Predominantly, a lot of these appended informations actually focused around hard infrastructure. What we were trying to achieve, I think, within Gig City or what the community was seeking was a mix of hard infrastructure, community projects and business development projects. I think there could be another amended list in terms of actually the investment that we put into into community projects and also within business startup projects again as well, which probably would change that narrative slightly. Yeah, I think we, it's something that we're progressing, it's something we're adapting. But this, I think, the list that the providers more predominantly focused around the hard infrastructure side of it again as well as much as the outcomes that we were seeking to achieve through Gig City.
councillor Gary.
Thank you. I just wanted to go back to the Four Corners project and drill down a little bit more into what that, the outcomes that had for us following that. So you mentioned the delegations. It might be that Mr Adamson's the one to answer this question. But the question is around, it's not just about Gig City and Smart City, that that interest and profile can then be a trigger to other things. And I wondered if you or Mr Adamson might have a comment to make on that.
I was looking to the left to see whether or not Mr Adamson was here.
Oh, is he not? Sorry.
So I will, I will try to answer in his stead. I was, I did meet with the Bendigo delegation that came out to the city at the start of the year and had the opportunity to spend some time with the ABC Four Corners Programme. What it felt like is that it was actually a means or a tool of actually amplifying a number of the of the aspects of our economic development strategy, focus around a compelling destination, our alliances, our focus around business vitality. So I think I do agree that it extends more than just beyond a television programme that was screened probably on a Sunday night within Australia. It provided an opportunity to actually, another point of difference to sell the city and actually showcase the city as a city that's innovative and moving in a in a direction around, towards smart activities and also business growth and development. Within that, I think it does help in terms of the traffic that we usually get in terms of contacts around potential investors and also talent coming into the city again as well. It's a key challenge for us still in terms of getting people in and the right, the talent to meet the needs of our businesses. And anything such as the Four Corners Programme that can support that, I believe is very, very welcome.
councillor Elder.
Actually, a similar question in the sense of are we tracking any of the inquiries about startup business inquiring about Dunedin because they see us as a gig city?
In terms of whether or not we're as a gig city, I'd actually have to check back within the team regarding that. We do track inquiries that come in in terms of potential companies wishing to come to the city. And it would also be worthwhile having a conversation again with organisations, the Startup Dunedin Trust. But we can certainly come back with that information. Certainly, without harking too much about it, again, one of the drivers for the location of the Centre of Digital Excellence within Dunedin was again around the infrastructure that was placed within the city. And again, there's certainly been as recently as yesterday, discussions or promotion of the city and a range of different services. There was an article around smart hospitals, for instance, yesterday in relation to the the $1.5 billion redevelopment of the hospital and what that actually means for the services that are delivered there. So I'm sure I'll have to double check that and around the specifics. But more generally, I believe that it is, it is that the concept of a smart city has actually been attractive to both government and to businesses as well.
So could you have anecdotal evidence that you're seeing an increase in the number of people looking at, you know, starting up or setting up here or?
I'd like to come back with some harder, something a little bit harder. There is anecdotal, but I'd like to come back with something that's a little bit more firmer for the committee in terms of that level of detail.
Okay. Thank you for that.
councillor Wiley, you indicated you wish to move. Moving the, at the recommendations as per the order paper. Do I have a second, councillor Gary? Discussion. Councillor Gary.
Thank you.
Do you, you'll introduce it.
I've got a page of notes to talk about. This has probably been one of the projects that have been dearest to my heart as a councillor. Having been appointed to the Digital Community Trust in February 2015. We have come a long way and it was very good to see this paper and the Martin Jenkins Report. It definitely shows we didn't get everything right. But I tell you what, we did get a lot right. It wasn't all wrong. And I think that's the big thing we've got to get out of it. Personally, I would give us a seven out of 10. And I think that really does iterate how far we came. To give you an idea, Chattanooga, when I visited them in 2015, they'd already had the gig for five years. And they figured they'd got 50% right. So we were a lot further down the line than they are. And it does take me to the fact of having just come back from Bendigo and spoken there as part of the Gig City presentation. To give you an indication, what the benefits we have and our speed. If you downloaded the movie Avatar, you could download that movie in 18 seconds here in Dunedin with Gig. If you download that same movie in downtown Melbourne on an average of 25 megabytes per second, it will take you 14 minutes and you may get it in, you may not. There's a big difference there and we are now seen as a great city to do business with. And we are leaders in the southern hemisphere in this area. Could we do more? Yes. And this is what the report does set out. I do want to make a special mention of the Digital Community Trust. The work, the hours, the effort that the people associated with the Digital Community Trust put in were tremendous. They were very happy with some areas. They were very frustrated in others and they hit a few brick walls. But it was a great group with great minds. John Gallagher did a great job in leading that. Sarah Simmers, Mike Horn, Mike Hart, Mike Collins, Marco Wilkins, Peter Hurls. Former councillor Ginty McTavish was there. Councillor Damien Newell replaced Ginty. Great staff involvement from John and Fraser and Lesley Marriott, the Gig City Project Coordinator. So a big thanks go to them for what we did. Corus obviously have to be thanked because if they never ran the Gig City campaign, we would never be reaping these rewards today. And I think that's really important to acknowledge Corus and to thank them for running the campaign and for the benefits that we have today. Oh, there we go. Just downloaded it and Bendigo. So when we look at some of the areas, it was in 2015 when the Rugby World Cup was on, we had the Chair of Tu'An's here. And he sent a tweet out that went around the world and got unbelievable results. He was able to sit at Nova and stream the Rugby World Cup using our wifi. Now, that may not mean much to us. But to the world of wifi and open wifi, that was huge. And those are the wins, we don't see them because we've now enjoying them. But the rest of the world are just going, oh my God, look at this. And that's where the Four Corners show has really made a big impact in Australia. Fraser touched on what the benefits were and it's in the report. You know, the $9 million in gig speed connectivity subsidize, the $200,000 in the Gig Start Fund, the Gig City Community Fund, which over $500,000 for 23 organisations, 15 wifi hotspots in Edge Room. Huge, huge for the city. But the other part that really comes through is the benefits of the startup business ecosystem and how people are coming to Dunedin knowing they can do business here and they can do business here easily. You don't have to hop on a plane and carry files across the other side of the world. You can stream them, send them, receive them, no problems. I think that's one of the reasons why the government talked about code of Centre of Digital Excellence coming to Dunedin because we did have this advantage and that is going to be another big game changer for us. So really, the Martin Jenkins Report is a warts and all report. It does talk about what we've done well, but it also talks about some of the failings, but also what we need to do going forward. So I thank those who engaged with the people from Martin Jenkins when they came to do the Gig City review. And some of your progress really summed it up. We didn't do everything at the pace that stakeholders would have liked. But we are developing and embedding a smart city culture. We are showing leadership by the Dunedin City Council moving forward. And we need to really improve on leveraging the Gig City infrastructure. But what it all needs is we've got to make sure we don't miss and we don't forget about, is we have to fund it. We have to support it. We have to implement it. But more than anything, we have to champion it. And that means all of us at this table and that means all at the senior leadership team. If we're not going to do any of that, then all the wins and all the gains and all the successes are going to be lost. And that's what I fear. We have to maintain the momentum. So we are world-leading. This does benefit all residents. So the number one thing we need to take away from this report is let's show real leadership moving forward. Thank you.
councillor Gary.
Thank you. And I am glad that my colleague had the first shot at speaking because it leads in really well to what I want to say. So following on from my question to Mr Liggett around the benefits of Gig City as a trigger for other things, I want to tell you a story. The group from Bendigo came out. It was quite an illustrious group, the mayor, the CEO, elected representatives and staff. And certainly the Four Corners Programme had triggered their visit, as I understand it. But they're interested in so much more than that. They're putting a bid in for to be a city of gastronomy. They're really interested in our city of literature. Of course, that came in around the same week or about a week later when we got Gig City. And so they're interested in many things. That then resulted in an invitation to go back to Bendigo. And we'll be putting a report on in the next activity report, but I just want to mention it now. Councillor Wiley and I attended the planners' conference, a rural and regional planners' conference in Bendigo. And you might be asking yourself, as we did, what on earth are we doing speaking at a planners' conference? But it was a very wide-ranging conference. And the thing that councillor Wiley spoke about Gig City and I spoke about Project China and there was a great deal of interest in both. I want to commend my colleague who gave an outstanding presentation on Gig City to the collective audience, which went down very, very well. We got great feedback and he demonstrated that difference between the speeds, the 18 seconds versus the 13 minutes, and it certainly was very effective. What was clear to me from that experience was that we are leaders and we are doing some really exciting things here. And sometimes it takes you to step outside where you are to realise what we have achieved thus far and what we can achieve going forward. And that is the single lesson that I brought back from Bendigo. People were astonished and they talked about and were thinking about, well, perhaps we can think big as well in regards to these matters. I want to acknowledge the leadership of all of those involved in the Gig City bid and those, that period since then and looking forward to Smart City and the work of staff towards us. Thank you.
councillor Hawkins.
Yeah, thank you, Mr Chairman. If only we always, if only we always had something as woeful as the NBN to compare ourselves to, I think we'd all be grateful. This is going to sound like a black hat contribution to this discussion and it's not because I disagree with the comments of my colleagues, I fully endorse them. I just think that the conversation we need to have around this is a little bit wider than that. Fully support the work that's been done and will continue to be done around encouraging and supporting the startup business community and the tech sector. That's obviously a growth industry here. And there are certainly advantages to exploring technological solutions to some of our council business, whether that's infrastructure or otherwise. But I think we are, it's right to have a degree of healthy scepticism around the discussions that we're having around essentially big data in this case. I don't think I've been to a conference in the last five years where someone hasn't got up and given a keynote speech trying to sell us a technological solution to any problem. It could be environmental or housing or social wellbeing or whatever. There's an app for that and someone will sell it to us. And I think there are some serious conversations we need to have around if we're going down the big data route around data sovereignty and data privacy. There's no such thing as safe and secure data. And particularly if you're relying on proprietary operators or proprietary software to deliver what we are what we are looking at, and that seems likely given the paper that we have in front of us. Then I think we have to think very carefully around the risk we're prepared to put our residents and visitors in that regard. And I think it was disappointing in some respects that the Martin Jenkins Report didn't even touch on those kinds of issues and risks, which I think are very, which I think are very real. The recommendation around hiring a senior staff member and making this part of everything that we do in terms of where it sits in the strategic framework, I think is fine in theory. We already have a couple of those. One's the Treaty of Waitangi and one is sustainability. And it would be fair to say that both of those are still a work in progress in terms of how we integrate those. And so I would hate to see expanding the brief of our overarching strategic considerations come at the expense of integrating what we've already committed to doing. And speaking of sustainability, I mean, it's off our balance sheet, so to speak, in terms of carbon accounting. But it's worth noting that the carbon footprint of cloud computing is roughly equivalent to that of the aviation industry globally. So let's not kid ourselves that finding cloud-based software solutions is necessarily an environmental solution. So definitely support progressing this work, but I would strongly suggest that it not advance at such a rapid rate as to not allow us to have some quite serious conversations at a policy level around how we deal with issues around privacy and data sovereignty. And I think just as a footnote, the concept of that wider integration of technology, it's interesting to note in education at the moment, particularly in the United States, we're seeing a shift away from what was, how the concept of the digital divide was commonly understood as helping poor people get access to computers. But what we're, what we're seeing over there at the moment is in the low, in the less resourced public schools, a heavy reliance on remote online learning, whereas in communities that can afford to pay them, a shift back towards tactile experience and human interaction, which are rightly seen as equally as, if not more advantageous in terms of people's social development. So this isn't, you know, there's no such thing as the tech utopia as much as any conference keynote speaker will try and sell you that it is. But that doesn't mean that we shouldn't be exploring at a reasonable rate opportunities that we have to do our own work more efficiently. Thank you.
councillor Ramalley.
I think this is a very encouraging report, but I do go to like table seven of the Martin Jenkins Report where it compares us to the other cities. I don't need to go there. And again, brings back the same thing I was saying before in the previous Economic Development Report. And that is that we should always be comparing ourselves to the other major centres and making sure that we are actually putting in the initiatives that they're putting in as well. Because in the end, Gig City was a, to some extent, a chorus process. And then we've jumped on, we've done a good job of getting on the back of that. But now I think we need to really make sure that we are actively keeping up. I'll bang on the drum again for the four main centres. You know, we are six by population, but we're still one of the four main centres and we need to make sure we keep up there with keeping sure that we develop all this technology. So I'm saying well done and let's keep going and let's make the city genuinely live up to this name. to this name.
Well, I'd just like to add my voice to the thanks to the Digital Community Trust for the work they've done in delivering what is a pretty good result from Gig City, but I would like to touch on what councillor O'Malley has mentioned, and that is, in New Zealand, we had an advantage. That advantage is disappearing. As the spread of fibre through New Zealand goes ahead, the access for business and organisations and individuals to really fast broadband, gigabit speed broadband is going to be everywhere, pretty much. So it's important that we, as a city, identify where having that infrastructure gives us an advantage, where it aligns with the areas that we have the ability to take advantage and that we do take advantage of that. You know, we, we're in a pretty amazing position, I travel a bit around the world, I would, I would say that there would be probably less cities than you could count on your hands, small or large, around the world where you have free public wifi that runs at gigabit speed. That is something that is not there. Most, most big nations around this world do not have gigabit speed connectivity. So it is a significant advantage for us over the next couple of years, including probably with the help of Code, we need to find our hotspots and try to work on how do we take the greatest benefit from that infrastructure. I was recently in China and we visited Wuxi, a city that has a tech, high-tech industry, and I did see some scary stuff. For instance, city management, management of everything, their traffic, their social benefit system, security, the whole lot was being monitored. And you sat there and realised that this amount of big data needs serious, serious security. For instance, they can check on whether someone should be receiving a social security payment by noting whether they have a car, where that car travels, where they shop, how much they spend, all of these things are measurable in this day and age. So while big data has some ability to make our lives a lot easier, wouldn't it be great when you pulled up at the traffic lights and there was no cross-traffic, that it went green straight away instead of leaving you sitting there, or you get stopped by a red light and no cars go through before it turns green for you to go? Some of those things will make our lives a lot better, but I think I do have to sound a word of caution around what, what big data, how big data could be used in ways which are not so helpful to us in our, in our daily lives and protecting that data so that it's secure is really important. So with that, I will pass on to write a reply to councillor Wiley.
Thank you. I didn't quite expect to go down the big data channel this afternoon, but anyways, I think the key thing is we need to stick to the report in the sense of what Martin Jenkins has set out for us, and that is the leadership role for the Dunedin City Council and actually moving forward in that direction and making sure that we look at this report embedded into our city DNA so we will prosper accordingly going forward and we continue to lead the world in some of these areas. So thank you.
All right councillors, I'm going to put it, all in favour? Against? Carried. That brings us to items for consideration by the Chair. There are none? In that case, I will move that the meeting goes into non-public for the reasons outlined in the order paper. Seconded councillor Gary. I'll put it, all in favour? Against? Carried. So we'll take a short break while the media leaves the room and then we'll recommence in non-public.